March 12th. The meeting will come to order. Mike Delleki will be late this evening, so I've been asked to fill in. The first item is roll call.
Patrice Steiner?
Here.
Steve Becker?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Dick Bonin?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here. Next item is consideration of the consent calendar. We can approve the calendar by one motion and one vote, or we can draw, we can separate out a single item according to your wishes.
I'd like to remove G, please.
G?
G for further explanation.
Did I hear correctly, the ambulance bills?
G, the ambulance bills.
Okay.
Otherwise, I move adoption of A through F. Second.
Motion second to adopt all items except G. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those nay. Motion carried. And now we can consider item G.
This is, I need some explanation of why we're canceling $38,000 rather than 30. The explanation was not very clear as to the reasoning behind this.
Okay, there was about $75,000 more in revenues received from the ambulance. That means that means more in billings. Therefore, the receivables are up a lot more. And trying to keep the receivables in line, that's why we increased about that to additional $8,000.
I still don't understand. We have this much in collectibles, so why would we, why would we write off? I still don't understand why we would write this off.
We're trying to keep our receivables in line, and we're also, if I, if we didn't do that, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have the, basically with this here, it ends up being like a zero break even situation for last year. If you cancel less than that, we actually have to refund money back to the townships.
If we don't cancel it, we have to refund money back?
Right, if that's what you wanted to do, yes. This basically breaks even the amount of revenues and expenses for the ambulance service for last year.
Okay, it says here that we will continue to attempt to collect these even though they've been canceled.
Right, yes.
So if they've been canceled and we've received them, then do we have to refund them to the township?
No, that has nothing to do with that. We're, this is on a year-to-year basis, and what we're saying, we're canceling this amount of money, this amount of receivables, just so we had a break even for last year. If we collect more, I mean, as in the future years, it'll be, those would be applied to future years of the ambulance service.
Still doesn't make any sense to me.
Oh, you got me baffled.
Pardon?
You got me baffled now, too.
This is really a bookkeeping entry to bring us to zero.
Yes. We're still going to make every effort to attempt to collect the money, so it's writing it off of our books as uncollectible, so that our books are balanced at the end of
But not writing off everything that's owed?
No, there's still the balance out there. I'm not sure of the amount, I have 160,000, something. There's still a lot of receivables out there. You know, you have like $70,000 in billings each month, so basically I have like two and a half months roughly of receivables out there, so.
Any further questions on this item?
Steve, do you?
No, I was just going to say, it's not unusual for, for financial statement purposes to, when you have accounts that are long past due, and the chances of collecting them gets to be fairly slim, to write those off, because it, you've already, there's a, $30,000 has already been budgeted, so by writing them off, that doesn't mean you give up the right to collect it. It just cleans up your financial statement.
No, I understand that. I guess my, my, and in fact, within the amount of things that we did by consensus, we wrote off uncollectible bills that said that these can't be collected. That's not what the fiscal note on this says. The fiscal note on this, at $38,829.40, Steve, is an interesting number.
It's the amount that's used to break even for the amount of revenues and expenses for last year's ambulance service.
So it's an amount that was attained by looking at a balance sheet.
Right, your revenues and expenses.
And it doesn't really have any relationship to any bill that is collectible or uncollectible.
Right, it's no, not any particular bill, yes.
Any further questions? Motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the write-off.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this item. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay?
Nay.
Motion carried. Next item is citizen comments, observations, and petitions. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less. None have come forth. We'll move on to reports. First item is Platteville Library Board, Eileen Nichols.
The minutes are in the packet, I don't have anything to add.
The second item is Museum Board. Mike Delleki is not here. Third item is Tourism Committee Meeting, Steve Becker.
I don't have anything to add.
Other reports, Museum Department End Report, you have a document in your packet. Any questions about it? Next is the Tourism Entity End Report, you received that last week. Next item is Airport Financial Statement. Next is the Water and Sewer Revenue and Expense Report. Next is the City Attorney Itemized Statement. And last is Department Progress Reports. Okay, move on then to action items. First one is authorizing the issuance and sale of $3,240,000 general obligation refunding bonds.
Mr. Killian, I'd like to ask Jeff Belangi to come up and introduce this item, as well as the next one, if we can try to address them at the same time.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. This is the culmination of some work that we've put into in terms of refinancing some of our existing monies, loans, primarily due with our tax incremental districts, six and seven, and slight restructure of a maturity of one of our CIP projects from 2009. I have passed out to everyone, the council members, two sheets. One, you'll see that pretty burnt orange color page there with pricing comparisons. And the other is a three-page handout with the city of Platteville and the date of date and the two issues, the 3.240 and the $935,000 notes. Does everyone see that? This issue really, for our purposes, the two issues are combined for statutory purposes. We had to split them up just due to purpose, so that I could get you tax exempt rates on all of them. So that's why when you take a look at the burnt orange page, you'll see it looks like one particular issue there of $4,175,000. You with me? Okay. It's oftentimes impossible to find exact comparisons selling on the same day that you sell. So I had to look for a AA minus Wisconsin credit, and we found two. They sold recently. You can see, the one in the center is Glenwood City. That's a AA minus, that's the same rating that we have. It sold on the 25th of February. Does everyone see that in the orange column? And then if you look to the right, the New Richmond School District, also sold, that sold back on the 19th. They're also a AA minus, same credit rating as us. Obviously, they're not on the same day. Today's the 11th of March. So what we need to do to make a comparison, or to see how well we did, is what we do is we compare it to a true AAA on the day of the sale. All right, so if you take a look at our numbers in each of those columns, before you get to where it says "spread" on the yellow, I'm sorry, on the burnt orange sheet, if you see that AAA scale there, that scale is the most perfect sale on that particular day from data that is kept from all the municipal bond sales in the United States for that day. All right, so that is our benchmark for the day. It's a perfect scale. It's given to us by municipal market data. They're required to do it with respect to industry standards. And the important thing then is to look at the spread, which is the difference between our AA minus and what the true AAA would have sold at today, if we were a true AAA. Does anyone understand? So the lower those spread numbers are relative to the other issues, the better we did relative to perfection. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Now, if you take a look, and obviously, not, not every maturity, but in most maturities, we outperformed the others by a significant basis. If you take a look back at the three-page handout, you will see that where we have purchase price premium and true interest cost, for our $3,240,000, we're actually going to pay you a premium, because we sold them at a higher price than the face value. So we're going to pay you another $27,625. My proofreading wasn't very good when I rushed out today, because I should be a dollar sign with a comma.
$27,000.
Yeah, you're right, Ken, I screwed up, but it's, it's actually $27,625. And when you take into account all the expenses of rating, et cetera, legal opinion, and these bonds are out 2022 through 2028, we got a 2.663%. Is everyone with me? The allocation of this full amount is really going to go to our TIDs 6 and TIDs 7. So for those of us who, obviously you all understand the TID and the fact that we're waiting for revenues to, to generate toward the end of that, I feel pretty good that this was an opportune time to move these bonds out longer term against those TID increments. Okay? The front end, the 935, basically, is going to be allocated to, also to the TIDs. Part of it really is, it's kind of a smoke and mirrors thing, I'm not going to kid you. We've got some Evergreen Road, and we've got some other projects that we can borrow tax exempt monies for. But the TIDs owe the city accounts from payments made already that we'd like to get back into those accounts. So it's six to one and a half dozen another. So that's why we split it into notes. And the true interest costs, again, there's a slight premium. We're going to pay you not only the 3 million, or $9,35,000, but another $4,628.45. And that true interest cost expressed in our interest rate is 1.768%.
You said 9 million, Jeff?
Oh, I apologize, 935,000, I apologize. And those two amounts should total our $4,175. Okay? Now, if I may, since I'm here, there are two other things I'd like to address with the council. And you'll find it in this three-page handout. If you'll turn to the middle page, you will see the front cover of a 2011 issue that we did, $3,950,000 of note anticipation notes. They're sitting there due in 2015 at a 2.875. We have used those monies for capital projects within the city. Okay? If the market continues to hold, as we get toward the fall when this is callable, I may suggest that we take these out long-term, just to lock into the great rates that we have right now. So that's something this summer, or this early fall, you could be looking at doing. I just wanted to give you a heads up here now. They're not actually due until 2015, but, you know, we're in, in January, we're in a 42, 42-year low in municipal rates. I think Howard was teasing me a little while ago, both he and Duane, about it's not likely they're going to get much lower, they're probably going to go the other direction. So we're watching the market for you. If you turn to the last page, the 4.7 million taxable general obligation promissory notes, does everyone see that? We call those BABS, the Build America Bonds. If you remember when we might have done those, it was a program under the Obama administration that said, hey, you can do taxable debt for the same types of projects, you do tax exempt debt, and we'll pay you 35% of the interest payments every year. Okay? So when we looked at doing that versus the then-existing tax exempt market, it was a little better for the city to go into the BABS program, because over the course of it, it saved us some interest dollars. But if you've heard the term "sequestration," it's fairly likely that they're not going to continue to pay us the 35%. And I got to tell you, I was suspicious back then that they wouldn't pay us the full amount for the full term. So I put into your issue what is called an extraordinary call. And unfortunately for others, they don't have an extraordinary call. So if in fact they don't pay us the 35% of interest, and it drops to the 28 that they're saying they're going to drop it to, we then exercise this extraordinary call, and if this market stays where it is, we're going to save you hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of interest.
Yeah, because the rate escalates.
Yes, and you're going to go from, these are taxable with a 35. Even taxable now, Barb, would be almost 2% less than what these rates are. Now, you go to tax exempt, you probably knock off another 40 to 50 basis points off of those rates. So I'm, Larry said to me, we're kind of hoping they don't. And I said, you're absolutely right. I'm on my knees every night praying that they go to 28%, because a lot of my clients are going to benefit from that. So those are the two other issues I just wanted to bring up to you, as something that we're watching for you.
And the 2015, the first one, the 3.95 million, is a balloon payment in 2015? It's the whole?
Yes. If you recall, and I know you will, Barb, when we looked at, you know, five, six, seven years ago, when we started our five-year CIP, we had a lot of projects in there that we were going to do, and yet we wanted to manage them all at $1.94 per thousand, over and above what our then-existing debt service rate was. In order to do that, you know, I said, well, let's, let's plant these as short-term, because you're going to borrow some more money, and then we'll just take these out when you do additional projects in the future, so that we have a bigger issue, and we have a much easier time of structuring it in that $1.94. And so that's why we're looking at this. In retrospect, wow, if we can get out of this short-term rate where it was there into long-term rates, that 2-something? We won both, in both cases. So yes, that's right. Thank you. Any, any questions? Thank you very much.
No questions? The first action item is the Resolution 1304. The motion is in order.
I move adoption of Resolution 1304, authorizing the issuance and sale of 3.24 million in general obligation refunding bonds. Second.
Motion is second. Is any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is Resolution 1305. The motion is in order.
I move adoption of Resolution 1305, authorizing the issuance and sale of $935,000 in general obligations promissory notes. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is Resolution 1306, billing rates for brush pickup. And we need to make a selection as far as options, and this is one of the options, to pass the resolution as far as established in billing rates.
In your packet, you'll see Option A, the resolution, as well as Option B. Verbally, I'd like to offer up Option C, which is always change nothing. Option B makes a significant change and requires people to call in when they want their brush picked up. At this time, we're not real sure whether that would save money for the city or not. But that is certainly Option B.
In one of our discussions, Larry, we talked about reducing the number of pickups from 12, was it 12 to 10, or something like that? Was there a reduction?
14 to 10.
14 down to 10. 14 down to 10, okay. So that would be?
Right now, we have 10 on these options. Option C would stay at 14.
At 14?
I, I think it's reasonable to reduce it to 10. However, do nothing would suggest that we're not changing that.
I move adoption of Option B. No charge for brush pickup.
I do have one issue on the pickups. The first pickup is April 4th. Seems kind of early to me, end of season, especially this year.
This year it is.
Yeah, I don't see, now disappearing real quick here in the next couple of weeks. Anyway, that was my only comment.
Patrice, in this case, I would have to say, I hope that you are incredibly incorrect with your?
I also do. My, my suggestion would be maybe to move that pickup to like early June, and have the first pickup for the season April 18th.
If, if the weather remains like this, we, we may do that.
We'll have to adjust the schedule.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I am actually for Option A on the $25 charge for brush. I feel that, you know, the council's been working during a lot of work sessions to figure out ways to make city staff more efficient, and during the, during the, during the discussion for, for the budget last year, a lot of ideas were tossed around, like having the swimming pool closed one day during the week, not giving quite as much money to the economic development entities in town, and other, other ideas. And all those ideas were actually put back into the budget. So during that budget time, we decided, okay, we need to do some work sessions to figure out how to cut back on some of the services that the city offers. And we came up with this. I was under the impression, we came up with this because we felt it would have the least amount of impact on city residents, and yet still save man-hours for city staff. So that's why I prefer Option A. I still remember back to our discussions, and I, I still think this is a good idea. There are certainly, certainly ordinances I don't care for, that I still have to adhere to, like shoveling the sidewalks. A lot of, a lot of residents don't have sidewalks in town. I have to, I happen to have 180-foot-long one. I don't like the ordinance of having to shovel my sidewalk within 36 hours after a snowstorm, but that's the way life is. And the $25 brush charge can actually be brought down by sharing with a neighbor, and it could end up being brought down to like $6 or $8 rather than $25. People spend probably more, way more than that on fertilizer or plants for their yard. I don't feel that $25 for brush is, for a brush pickup is very much. So I support Option A.
I would prefer Option C, but Option B is obviously the motion. I think Option B is just going to add workload to city staff, because it will require an individual on the city staff to now take phone calls and set up a route for the brush pickup. And I don't think that that's any more efficient than what we're doing now. It just adds another layer of staff work.
I'm more interested in this verbal Option C, because I think we're just asking for problems of getting stuff piled up in the backyards to hold it, because people don't want to have to call or pay to have this stuff picked up. And that's why we're paying taxes. I realize that we pay taxes for a lot of other things, too, but we still have a lot of people in town, that they're not going to be able to do some of these jobs, to get it to the curb, or the $25 to have it picked up. So I'm going to say Option C.
Wow, we're really split here.
Well, Option C is simply leave things the way they are. Correct. And we can accomplish that simply by tabling this.
Or by voting against it.
Or vote down Option B.
And make a motion to table. Second.
But there's already, don't we already have a motion?
You can table anytime, yeah.
Yes. The motion is to table?
I don't know if you can have a motion to table after you have a motion. I don't know what Robert's rules are.
I don't happen to know this one.
Well?
There's already a motion on the table. I don't think you can have a motion on top of a motion until the motion is voted on.
I mean, I think you're right, Barb. I'm, I'm not 100% confident, but I believe you're right.
Right, would make sense to me.
We'll vote on the original motion?
I'll call a question then.
Roll call, please.
Steiner?
No.
Becker?
No.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
Bonin?
Which one are we voting on?
Option B.
Original motion?
Killian?
No.
Motion died. Now, I would suggest that if no other option is, if not, if no other motion was offered, that things would remain as they are. So since that motion was declined, not voted up, I would suggest that we don't need another motion.
True. That's correct.
Thank you, we'll move on.
So we do nothing again?
More motion to table, either way.
Well, the table needs to come back.
Okay, next item is Ordinance 1307, amending the official traffic map. No parking loading zone on east side of Roundtree Commons. That Howard?
When Roundtree Commons was installed, there was an indented lane along Chestnut Street. It was intended to be used for bus loading and delivery loading zones. It was not signed as such. Students have taken advantage of a gray area and begun overnight parking, blocking delivery trucks from using this area. So since this area is within the city right-of-way, we believe that we should enact the ordinance to enforce this as a loading zone.
Motion to adopt Ordinance 1307.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is bike racks in parks. Jordan? Howard?
I'll get it. The Safe Routes Committee initially proposed purchasing bike racks for, for certain areas, proposed it to Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee, and they, they are recommending the use of park impact fees to install 12 bike racks that will hold up to eight bikes each, and one bike rack for up to six bikes. Cost to procure approximately $8,200. There's over $150,000 in the Park Impact Fund. We have obligated $50,000 in matching funds to that, so even with, even when we do provide this money to the PCA, there's still over, there's still $100,000 left. The committee recommends that half of the eight-stall bike racks be black, the other half be safety yellow. Quite frankly, staff would prefer they all be black, but that's up to the common council.
I agree with the staff on the black.
I actually like the yellow and black. And I drove around and looked at the parks again, and we have very colorful children's playground equipment. I have no problem with yellow. So I'll make a motion that we follow the committee's recommendation, which is half-black and half-yellow.
Second.
Motion is second to follow the recommendation. Any further discussion?
I don't care what color they are.
Well, frankly, I don't either, and I'm a little surprised it was brought to us. But I guess if we're supposed to vote on it, then it's here.
No, I think yellow is gaudy. I prefer black.
The reason this comes forward is because they're park impact fees.
I understand that, but it seems when the committee voted twice. First of all, it was all yellow, and then the amendment was made to go half-yellow and half-black. I just think that if the committee, the Parks, Forestry and Recreation Committee said half and half, then I would abide by that.
I think they just want to be diplomatic. Maybe not a bad idea. I don't know, for years, bike racks were what, silver? And people still found that.
I just like to cause problems.
Further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Steiner?
No.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next items are information and discussion. First one is ordinance amending the official traffic map, which would read bicycles may use full lane. So I assume this is Howard.
Yes. Community Safe Routes Committee has recommended a change to the official traffic map. Staff concurs. What happened was, a couple of years ago, a bicyclist was traveling eastbound on Adams Street, approaching Chestnut Street, traveling next to the curb as bicyclists normally do. As he was negotiating the turn onto Chestnut Street, a semi truck came up next to him negotiating the same turn. As the wheels of the truck came around that corner, they ended up pinching the bicyclist between the tires and curb, causing severe injury to the bicyclist. The Safe Routes Committee proposes this sign that says bicycles may use full lane so that a bicyclist can use the full street lane like a motorcycle does. And what this does is it will do two things. One, it'll tell the bicyclist that they should, they may or should move out into the regular traffic lane. The other is it warns motor vehicle drivers that bicyclists may be out in the middle of the lane during that maneuver around that corner. So hopefully, that will alleviate any problems in the future of somebody getting hurt between the curb and a truck tire. Our intent here is, at the last meeting, we removed school zone signs in the area. We have a school zone sign in that block between Elm and Chestnut. We would just remove the school zone sign and put this sign in its place on the same post if the council agrees to it.
Any questions for Howard? One person has asked to speak to this issue. Would you come forward, please?
I believe she just registered in favor.
All right.
Didn't she just register in favor?
She just registered in favor, she didn't want to speak.
You didn't want to speak? Okay.
I do have a question. Is this the only place in town that this is necessary? Has there been a review of other places that this might happen? That perhaps we need to consider other...
Hasn't this happened at the intersection of West Main and Hickory? A year ago, two years ago? No, that's this one you're talking about. There's another one, and it's the same guy.
At Main and Hickory? I'm not aware of, I'm not aware of any other incident.
You'd have to get, probably talk to Brian then, because I know what happened. Because I was sitting in the parking lot when the traffic was stopped. This person that got hurt that day was already handicapped. And I think it's the same person.
What intersection is that, Dick?
We have somebody who, we have Officer Perkpile who knows more about this.
How far wrong was I?
I was at both of those accident scenes. The second time, he was just a pedestrian. He was not on a bike. And he was in the crosswalk when he got hit.
Okay. Forgot about that, yeah.
And you were on the scene, Christine, when that cyclist was hit by the truck then?
I was.
Okay, and he was seriously...
He ended up losing part of his leg. Serious.
Was there any judgment as to who may have been at fault?
There was a civil trial that did proceed. It just wrapped up, I want to say a month or two ago. The jury found that the bicyclist was 85% at fault and the truck driver with a trailer was 15% at fault.
Do you know, are both of them residents, really from out of town?
The one that was injured is a resident. The one, the other one was part of a construction crew. I don't know where, remember where he's from.
So he's not familiar with the intersection? The truck driver was not familiar with that intersection?
Correct. But we have a witness that said he did swing wide to try to make the corner.
Truck driver tried to swing wide?
Yes, it was a pickup truck with a trailer. I don't remember if it was a gooseneck trailer or a bald hitch trailer. But he, we have a witness that said he came out to make that corner. But the trailer, obviously, doesn't swing as wide. So the back tires of the trailer are what hit the bicyclist.
Well, it is an unusual intersection because turning right, you don't have to stop.
Correct.
But if you're going straight, you've got to stop.
You have to stop, yeah.
At any rate, back to my first question. And I would encourage the Safe Routes Committee to look at other intersections that might have a potential for the same kind of issue. We don't need to have the issue...
First.
First.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. My first question is, was this accident that occurred prior to rebuilding of the street or after we rebuilt Water Street? What I'm getting at is that...
For Water Street.
Me and Chestnut.
It was after the reconstruction of Highway 81.
Okay, we tried to get the state to buy that corner business, but they haven't done that. So to me, that's the basic problem that's taking place here. My next question is, could the corner be made to read right turn, must stop?
And then all you'd have to do is put in a stop sign. Because you've got to stop, you go straight ahead.
Yes.
We could, in fact, ask, we could, in fact, change the law to, as Alderman Bonan says, just basically remove the plate, right turn, no stop. Then everyone would have to stop regardless of whether they go straight or turn right. I don't know whether that would have prevented that accident or not, possibly. But the issue then is, what does it do to the traffic flow for everybody coming around there if, basically, everyone eastbound on Adams Street has to stop? That there's a lot of traffic there. And I'm not sure how that would back things up.
Well, I think it's something you'd probably have to take a look at first because you've got the stoplights down on Main Street and Chestnut. That's going to help affect too because you're causing stopping and starting there. So you'd have to see what kind of reflection that would have on that back there as far as slowing traffic down. Maybe it wouldn't affect it at all. Chief, what do you think?
I don't know what impact it might have in terms of that intersection, but it's a slight incline so that to have trucks stopping there, I liken it a little bit to peeing in water where you might have trucks dropping their drivetrain, stopping on the incline and then starting again.
Your concern is bad weather?
No, larger trucks, semis, having difficulty negotiating that. Stopping there on a bit of an incline and then starting again. That's what you call rookies. That's what I call a traffic problem.
Well, it is a dangerous intersection also for motorists. And I've said this before in council that in coming from Main Street vicinity to that intersection, I've had to stop for trucks making a wide turn because some of them go actually into your driving lane when you're going to the east.
That's correct.
But stopping would also help with that because they wouldn't be able to get into that intersection as quickly as...
I would go back to Howard's comment about the traffic flow though, for traffic, through traffic in town. I mean, it isn't often you have a lot of people turning, or excuse me, continuing straight through that intersection. And now you would have every vehicle having to stop there. It would be an adjustment.
Doesn't seem to me like it should, it would really break up the flow of traffic. I wouldn't think it would be a very good idea myself.
The next comment I have is that I think the signage is insufficient in that it's between Elm and Chestnut. I think there should be more signage. If you're going to put a sign up that says bicycle may use full lane, I think it should be sooner, or there should be another sign that's placed as well. So that's what I think about that. Another possibility is to make a bike route onto Elm Street. And I think those are the comments I have right now. Any other comments, discussion?
Nope. I support it. I support having the sign bicycles may use full lane.
Okay, we'll move on. The next item, resolution establishing 2013 goals for the city manager. The motion is in order.
No, 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 no. That's next time.
Ah, excuse me, information. Next is sunshade purchase for the Flattville Community Aquatic Center.
I have a question. Do we currently have two sunshades?
Yes.
And so this would be adding a third sunshade?
Yes.
And is that, is there, this is for, this is not in the current budget?
Correct.
And the amount that you're going to request is how much?
$2,500 from park impact fees.
And have you done any applications for grants?
Yes, we have a $1,000 grant from the community fund.
Have you done any other applications for grants from the DRA or anybody?
I've looked at one from the American Dermatologist Association. We don't meet the criteria for this year, but we could do it for next year to continue to add more shade structures.
But you haven't applied to the Depuke Racing Association or any of the other areas?
So we're only talking 1,500 of the impact fees?
It's $2,500 from impact fees. The total cost is 35.
So it's 35, okay.
I have heard positive comments about the sunshades that are currently there. People do appreciate them.
And we've been asked for more, so...
Mike, you know you're late?
I dressed up for the occasion too. A little bit of an emergency at school that I had to help resolve. And no one died and there was no blood, but... How's Ken doing?
Good.
Surviving.
We're almost done.
A lot faster.
We're almost done. We're down to B.
D?
T.
Any more questions about the sunshade purchase?
Nope.
Nope.
Can we move on to D?
D?
D, the conditional use permit?
Yep.
Now, if I can find it here. This is...
This is the asphalt plant.
107.
Iverson Construction.
There we go, okay. Okay. Just a minute to get organized here.
The yellow one, Mike?
The yellow one.
We start with a staff report?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, item D, conditional use permit for Iverson Construction Asphalt Plant?
Yeah, this is the annual application that they make every year for the Rose Meyer Quarry. The only change is here, we did receive a complaint regarding the dust coming from the vehicles entering and exiting the site. So we added a recommended condition that they provide dust control through spraying or other means or else widen the pavement of the driveway as it connects to Mineral Street. Any questions?
Only, how are you going to evaluate whether dust control has been provided?
Well, I talked to the individual that made the complaint and I just let him know that if he has any issues, he should contact us and we'll then contact Iverson.
Other questions for Joe?
I'm actually just curious when it says the applicant provides dust control by chemical spraying, is that a environmental-friendly chemical spraying?
He talked about that to Plan Commission. They can either do a calcium chloride, he said, or they also make a product made out of tree sap.
Okay, so it wouldn't be harmful?
It doesn't last quite as long, but we're of the opinion that it was, last year was, since it was so dry, that it was unusually dusty, that it may not be as much of an issue this year. But they had also talked about, since they're in the asphalt business, that they could also just widen the driveway as well.
Personally, I would prefer that option.
Are they going to have a concern to keeping any of that from runoff into the branch right there, creek?
Runoff of what?
Of this. Keep the dust though.
I think that's why the tree sap was mentioned as an option. But like I said, I suspect they'll probably do the paving if it becomes an issue.
Other questions regarding the conditional use permit? Care to make a motion?
No motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. See, that's what the coming in late does. Okay. That's it for D. Item Z, I'm E.
Z. Oh, your eyes were...
Wow. You know, ran by McDonald's and got a hamburger quick on the way over here, so... Item E, the zoning amendment for the bicycle parking regulations. Joe, would you give us a brief on that, please?
Yeah, we had made several changes to the ordinance regarding parking at the last meeting and there was some concern about the proposed regulations that would require bicycle parking for new development. It was recommended at 50% of the amount for vehicles by the Plan Commission. There was some concern that was too high, so I took it back through the recommended route from the Safe Routes Committee, the Redevelopment Authority and the Plan Commission. And the consensus was to change that so that multifamily uses would require 25% of that rate and all other uses would be 10%. And all three of those groups were in agreement on that number. So that is our recommendation as well.
Questions on that? Now that moves us to the work session part of the evening. We will cover Southwest Health Center and EMS Services. City Hall remodeling sprinklers is a possibility. We have an estimate on what that might cost. The TID packet of recommendations and the alcohol recommendations. And then we will, following that, go into the closed session. So we need to have somebody make a motion to do that following the work session. So we need to have somebody make a motion to do that following the work session.
Make the motion that the council go into closed section, closed section per Wisconsin Statute 1985, parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically city manager performance evaluation. And this will happen after the work session and also includes adjourned, or coming into open session and adjourned.
Second.
The motion is second. Roll call, vote, please.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break and then move on with the work sessions.